Good morning, everybody. We're gonna start our meeting at the Capitol Regents. I'll have Julie.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic or will state as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockland County Commissioners Meeting on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. In attendance of the room are Chuck Nicholson, Leila, Kela. I know it's a short name. Christian Godo, Vaughn Coyle, Big Boy, and Major. And I'm Brian Cherichello, Chair. On Zoom, we have Pat Conway. We have Captain Man from the Sheriff's Department. We have Allison Goposki. We have Jason Smith. We have Jude Gates, and that's it. I think that's it. So we're gonna start with our opening and postage meter lease.
I move to award the proposal for postage meter leased Pitney Bowes for four SendPro C Auto postage meters in an amount not to exceed six thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-eight cents annually for a sixty-month term and two SendPro C Light postage meters to be added when your current postage meter agreements expire for an amount not to exceed one thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents annually.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you to Leila for all your efforts in terms of doing all so much research to get to this point, as well as I know you consulted and worked with a number of other department heads who use it. So thank you for your efforts across the county to make sure that we got the right one. Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to the holsters of the Sheriff's Office.
And move to award the proposal for holster to America, American Public Safety LLC for an amount not to exceed eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to consent agenda.
And I move to approve the November ninth, twenty twenty-three public minute meeting minutes, the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three non-public meeting minutes, and the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three public meeting minutes.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any additions, subtractions, or corrections?
All good for me.
All good. So on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. In our packets, we have adult medical daycare payout report, which is informational. I don't know if anyone had any comments that they'd like to make on that? No? Then we also have the New England Alliance Winter Conference and Annual Meeting. That's an informational piece. Any comments on that?
So Jason, do you think you'll have any issues? I mean, you're pushing up right on the threshold of needing to do the travel request.
Right. I, I, I mean, I don't submit food or travel anyway, so the other person that I would be going with would be the only person that would be submitting anything.
Further questions? If not, we're gonna go on to the accounts payable list.
I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three accounts payable list total of two million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I would like to, yes, I would like to compliment Chuck Nicholson for the analysis that he sent with the AP. It's, it's almost like it's in code when we get it, and you clarified everything without having to ask a lot of questions. It was really helpful.
Thank you. I'll continue on, on doing that, too.
I would love that. That's very, very helpful, so that we know exactly what's going on there. That's so. I was, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would echo Commissioner Godu's sentiments, really. It is incredibly helpful. I like what you have. It's hopefully it's not too long for you to, to pass it and for you to
No, because they already got like a format so you can pop and paste an update for individual warrants for the new listing. Obviously, one of every two warrant, oh, actually, one of the two AP warrants a month is gonna have that one twelfth of the cap.
Right.
So that's always gonna make up more than half of any AP list that we have, but
That's helps us understand what's happening.
Further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to reports, which we've changed. This is a little bit different, folks. We and thought that we would pick up the liaison reports, because typically the department heads will usually say basically the same thing. So what we did, what we've done now is we've, we let the commissioners make any comments that non-departmental liaison related. So anybody, Mr. Foil, do you have anything?
I don't.
Commissioner Godu?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, the only thing I'd like to say is, um, thank you very much to the all the elected officials that made the Monday meeting, Robert Burney's meeting for the the electronic
Cyber security.
Cyber security, which I thought was fantastic. A lot of good information there. And I thought it's done really well. It made us think about if something should happen. You know, what are we gonna do? You know, what are the backup plans? And I thought there was really good discussion there, and I want to thank Robin for putting that on, which was outstanding. And for the elected officials that did show up, um, good job. And I know we'll be talking about more about it later as well, but that's all I can say. So now we're on to a change order request for the Sheriff's Office.
I move to approve a change order request for the Tony Ford for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-three dollars as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm just gonna, just for a little, so the public or anybody in Zoom land or who re-watches this understands, so this was just a small change to add air conditioning or climate control in the rear of the van. The ramifications of doing this, which obviously, you know, it's short money, but we do have to change the lease, I mean, the resolution for the lease agreement. So that's why we're getting, that would be coming down the pipeline, too, as a amendment to the lease financing agreement. But all of this is just an effort to make sure we have climate control environment in the back of the transport unit.
We couldn't press a filter on that. Just a any other comment? If not, oh, did you have anything?
No.
Oh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Warner Hill Tower site plan change?
I move to approve a revised communications site use permit renewal for the tower site at Warner Hill and Derry and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
And this is just a, the purpose of this amendment is that we can, we're locked into that three-year term, but we don't have the ability to extend for two additional one-year periods. So we'll have to readdress this in three years.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Let's go to Finance Office Amendment of FY two oh two three, lease reimbursement resolution.
Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of lease financing for certain equipment. The Board of Commissioners for the County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, the county has determined that it may be necessary or desirable to advance money for, to pay for costing of acquiring three twenty twenty-three Chevy Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive police vehicles and one twenty twenty-four Ford Transit three fifty low roof all-wheel-drive van and one twenty twenty-four Ford F two fifty pickup truck with power attachment collectively the equipment. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of County of Rockingham, New Hampshire. One, the Board of Commissioners adopts this declaration of official intent. Two, the Board of Commissioners reasonably expects to reimburse advances made or to be made by the county to pay the cost of acquiring the equipment from the proceeds of certain lease financing with TV equipment finance incorporated. The maximum amount of the financing is expected to be issued in one or more series for the equipment, two hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. The vendors supplying the equipment to whom monies would be advanced by the county is for Tony Ford, one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars total, and the Chevrolet, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars total. Three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption and supersedes the lease reimbursement resolution previously adopted on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The foregoing resolution was adopted by the Board of Commissioners at its meeting on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
And I'm just gonna take a vote to a dot. I know it's in the, in the resolution, but on adopting the resolution, Commissioner Coil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
So let's go to bid waiver for UKG.
I move to approve the UKG proposal and bid waiver request of the amount of eight thousand dollars for a customer interface file as recommended by the Senior Director.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So this is really because, as I understand it, to have the software communicate with some our, with long-term cares, not where first.
Yeah, so it is specifically for scheduling. They had done it before, and, and again, we're, we're coming for this because it was not part of the overall scope of things for the, the UKG amount that was approved before for going to prone dimensions. And so that's why we're coming for this now. And yeah, so this is, so OnShift is a scheduling platform that long-term care uses for both nursing home and assisted living. And so this is so both systems can talk back and forth, so there could be updates.
Do we have, have we identified any other places coming down the pipeline where we're going to have to get additional software so that we can have that communication? Or should we be looking at changing any software within the departments to, that works better with UKG or?
Well, OnShift is used by many different long-term care facilities, and so this is what they had chosen some years ago. And so again, because this was not part of the original scope that was signed off on, geez, one and a year ago, year and a half, almost years, a while ago, let's just say. Um, we've been doing this implementation for a while now, so so it was outside the scope, and that's why we're coming for this right now. As far as any other departments, we don't think so. We think like advanced scheduling, the equivalent version that's in the pro dimensions right now should work for, in fact, we're trying to make sure we can import all the scheduled patterns. So that way the tenant warden doesn't have to manually input those. And any other departments that might happen to use scheduled patterns as well, trying to make sure everything can import. But again, launch of care is a whole different, uh, different thing as far as having it on shift. So this is just to make sure we can get this stuff around before they go live, too, as well. We're, we do have money's budget still in the software line in case there's any other custom interfaces that we realize that, oh, no, this used to work in workforce central, this doesn't work in pro or dimensions, pros the HRS and payroll process side, dimensions is time card side or timekeeping side. So we do have some money's already budgeted, just in case that, for example, you, the board approved the delay group amount before, like a block amount to be utilized. And so already they've updated our workforce central, um, there's file already for version three.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so that's a quick turnaround. So that was nice. So, um, you know, so we already do have some money's left over with them in case there is some some amount that they could do for pro or dimensions.
Okay.
So there very well could be some custom stuff. We just haven't identified it yet.
Okay.
So, sorry.
No, that was really, actually very helpful.
Okay. Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
And I Thank you.
Yeah. Human Resources, revised job description.
I move to approve a revised job description for infection conventionist effective November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, long-term care for assisted living care license and special healthcare services.
I move to approve the RSP Barca Assisted Living License Renewal Application, authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, if not, what?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, let's see, on the big waiver for Arjo.
I move to approve the Arjo Incorporated proposal and bid waiver request in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-four cents for a hygiene lift with scale and two hygiene trolleys as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, the reason is just for the big waiver here is because we already have the Arjo project products that we're in line, we're using. So it all works together, which makes sense as per, you know, the safety for our, for our employees as well as for the residents, and it's all in the
Further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Career staff unlimited for bring-in addendum?
I move to approve the career staff unlimited three-minute addendum and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this one? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Press Healthcare Products.
I move to approve the Press Healthcare Products LLC Service Agreement for initial two-year term beginning December ninth, twenty twenty-three, with auto renewal for an, for additional terms of one year each. Can authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Coil?
Yes.
Line item transfer, Coil?
I move to approve a line item transfer request dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, transferring six thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-six cents from expendable equipment to office supplies, twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from expendable equipment to non-expendable equipment, and three thousand one hundred from non-expendable equipment to expendable equipment as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Jason, this is just budgetary, uh, housekeeping.
Items were budgeted for, but because of the costs from where you budget, things lined up differently for the five hundred dollars to five thousand, five thousand dollars over. So we worked with Chuck on this to make sure that we allocated appropriately.
Great housekeeping. Thank you.
Any further, any further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, the additions with food, travel, and training requests?
I move to approve an additional day for pre-conference sessions at the Point Click Care Summit for a long-term care employee KM at an additional cost of one thousand sixty-five dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Motion seconded and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Refrigerated merchandiser and reach-in refrigerator approval?
I move to reject the proposals received for the refrigerated merchandise or RFP and reach-in refrigerator RFP and republish revised RFPs at a later date as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. So now we're on to department head updates. We're gonna stop with Chuck Nicholson.
Um, obviously busy as usual. Uh, we did have a late request regarding the opioid abatement grant. The state was looking for a certification of workers' comp coverage, but they could talk to the New Hampshire DOL and they certified us, and New Hampshire DOL does not issue certificates of self-insured coverage for workers' comp. Uh, we only get a certificate for coverage for excess. Uh, so I, so there was a stateman issue back, and so they're wrapping up as far as that official agreement regarding those, uh, the distributions out to all the counties. We did get something from, uh, the opioid abatement fund, uh, commission as far as, actually, they sent the document for all ten counties. Uh, and so our portion was like ten, eleven pages out of that. So hopefully that means that very soon, uh, I think we'll be conversing probably with the Hampshire Treasury or whatever. I think if we just give them our vendor number, they will send the money to that account. So hopefully within the month, you know, two million dollars will be coming in, so that'll be good to go. And that will be obviously for the special revenue fund
Right.
for opioid abatement. So, uh, so that's good news. Um, we continue to really, uh, work on the, uh, UKG prone dimensions, uh, transition. Um, and obviously jointly with HR, they'll be coming out in, you know, the next weeks as far as major time card editor training and also for the like rank-and-file employee train. So we do feel that on the front-facing end for, um, employees to just really deal with punching and maybe use the app to look at their balances, do time off requests, there'll be improvements there.
Oh, great.
Uh, again, just the normal style here and prep, too, that we're looking towards, whether it's, you know, W two, crap, ten nine nine, crap, things like that. So, um, that's, I'll just stop there.
Okay. Maybe Dan, though.
Uh, jail has a headcount of a hundred and fifty-five this morning. Uh, we're now COVID-free on our female unit. We had a small little outbreak with five females, and it was contained there. So good on the staff in the medical department for shutting that down. The AB project is almost complete. The bottom tier should be complete soon, which is nice because those are, suicide prevention cells are located. So to be able to pull them from C block where they currently are, put them back there is a, a good thing. We have thirty-seven applicants for the, uh, diver, uh, not diversion, yeah, sorry.
Diversion position?
The diversion position. So, yeah, it's pretty crazy. It, it's really the, uh, huge span of different things. We have program directors from all the community. We have clerks at court applying, so it's, it's pretty, pretty wild.
You know, I was in court yesterday, and they were, you know, there was, we were talking about a diversion, doing a diversion agreement in a case, and it's like there was some concern from defense counsel about, you know, making sure that that was seamless or making sure that there, the diversion program is so valuable and for alternative sentencing. So it's great to hear there are so many applicants, and we'll get someone filling in. Hopefully Allison, it's, thanks, sounds like she'll help with the transitions for the training, so, um, it will really be seamless coverage, and that's great for our residents.
Absolutely. And, uh, the dish sanitizing machine, it's starting to come towards the end of its life. Uh, we had Hobart come out yesterday and look at it. So that's what he had said. It's been there since I started fifteen years ago. So we're probably gonna be looking at next year, try to replace that at some point. So just something on the horizon coming down.
You can talk to Jason.
I'm sorry. Jason's like, no.
Talk to Jude, talk to Jude.
But, uh, that's all, that's all we have at the jail.
Julie Hoy.
Um, I know Allison has a few things to do, so I can defer to her.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Um, all right, so that's a nice segue to Allison.
Hi, morning, everyone.
Yeah, nice to see everyone. Um, general, we're gonna issue the holiday cards from the Board of Commissioners sometime Friday, Monday. Um, cookies for all the departments will go out like Monday, Tuesday. That's just a, a wrap-up of the scarecrow. We said we'd acknowledge everybody who participated. We want to make sure that everybody knows that we had so much fun with that activity. The years of service, we are gonna send the certificates and the pins to the department, uh, the division directors for dispersment in the event that they want to host a little kind of ceremony on their own. The catalogs, we will, uh, touch base with each of the ODDs where there is an individual that has a catalog because we, there's money tied to that, so we want to work that out with the individuals that would receive those. Um, our office has been pretty busy, and I appreciate all the, um, assistance and, um, good-natured, uh, team effort from my department. It's been insightful. I do want to talk a little bit about UKG. Um, our rollout has been changed four different times, uh, with the last rollout that we were gonna do in January. But, um, the core team, which has been Julie, Chuck, and I, met a week and a half ago, or a week ago, and discussed, um, some real problematic issues that we were having with on the UKG side. So we've had two very fruitful and involved, um, meetings with the UKG team. Um, and we have decided they wanted, we wanted to push to March, and that was what we told them. But because of some risk, uh, and, uh, support issues, we have collectively agreed to a February rollout after we gave them a punch list with a deadline of everything that they need to confirm and commit to having done by December twenty-second so that we can do training and then we can roll out the information we need to roll out for our employees to make sure that this is a successful transition. And Chuck, you can always pitch in on that, but, um, it suffice to say, we'll probably, uh, at some point, talk to the board offline about our experience with UKG and this whole, uh, system. But thank you all as well.
Thanks, Allison. I'm gonna go to Jude Gates next.
Good morning, everyone. All is well in facilities. Um, we are busy. We're also a bit shorthanded even more than usual this week. We have a lot of people that have been out with some unusual flu. Not COVID, but even so, we're really shorthanded unexpectedly. Um, we're pulling together some information to help assisted living with their mock survey next week. We're pulling together all the life safety data. Um, the new building, well, number four, they started testing yesterday. They are pumping a hundred and fifty-one gallons a minute for five days. So, um, everyone, it's standard practice, but I'm finding it causing me a bit of anxiety just because it sounds like a lot of water. We're taking drone pictures. Um, the aquifer is behaving as it should. We're testing four of the neighbors. All the equipment was installed last week, pre-test bacteria samples were taken. They'll go through again. Um, for us, ours are being tested every other day. Before they wrap up on Monday, they'll do a full range of testing, including twenty-five PFAS components. And they'll also pull bacteria sampling from the four neighbors. So it's on its way. DES will be here to observe tomorrow. Everyone seems quite satisfied with the way it's going, so, um, that's that. We've started winter conditions up at the job site. You may have noticed they have, um, the block wall undercover. Fire department has issued a permit for the heaters that they need, frost blankets, et cetera, et cetera. So we're there, um, as far as, but we're, we're still, um, keeping to the schedule. Even any little blip that happens, they just kind of pivot in another direction, so things are going fine. Um, regarding the cyber training that we had on Monday, interestingly, you might have seen Tuesday morning, there was a water system in Pennsylvania that was cyber-attacked. And, um, it helped to bring forward the conversation over here. Fortunately for us and to Robin's credit, we do not have any connection to the outside world from either our water or wastewater treatment facility. Um, so nobody would have been able to get in, but it is something that she's been working on. She got grant money to make sure that we're, we're good and tight. Evidently, um, water, wastewater, and building automation systems are quite vulnerable because people don't always think to protect them. So I was, um, the, the training I thought was really poignant. And then Tuesday morning, there we were having the conversation with our wastewater chief, so it was kind of interesting. And, uh, folks who come in today to pick up the surplus vehicles that you approved last week, and that's all we have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jude. Uh, we'll go to Pat Conway. Back.
Good morning. Um, we're going well here. We are super busy, um, as usual. Um, we, we've had a couple of trials this week. We had one where some of our newer attorneys did it. Um, Katie Carlson and Michael Dennis, uh, tried the case, and it was a felony reckless conduct with a motor vehicle where the person was driving crazy and crashed into a cruiser, was trying to stop him. Uh, our sheriff's department was involved in the investigation as well as Kingston Police Department, and they were able to get guilty verdicts, so I was very proud of them. It's good to see the younger folks learning and, you know, um, doing a good job for the county. We also had an investigative grand jury. Um, I don't know if you saw it on the news, but regarding the incident where a young man was killed in Portsmouth um, in the parking garage area, and that was very labor-intensive, where we had numerous witnesses come in and testify. And as a result of that, and working really closely with the Portsmouth Police Department, um, we were able to arrest a few individuals and, uh, hopefully bring them to justice for that deceased victim's family. Um, so that was a, a really, um, important thing for us to do, and, and again, just proud of my, my folks for working on that. Um, I have been in touch with Robin. She reached out to me, and, uh, we are going to get together next week to talk about the cyber incident response plan. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to do that. I'm sorry I didn't make it on Monday, but, um, I had physical therapy in the morning, and, and then I had a deposition here in the office, so, um, but we are gonna touch base, and I appreciate Robin reaching out, and she did, uh, send the cyber incident response plan, the proposal to me, so we'll go over that as well, probably next week sometime. Um, and I just want to thank HR for working with me on a, a personnel issue, just taking the time to chat with me about it and, and work with me about it. So that's it.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Uh, I'm gonna go to Captain Man, Sheriff's Department.
Good morning. Uh, the sheriff and major are at the chief's meeting this morning, so they got a little double booked, uh, but just Uh, but just wanted to pass along that everything here is going well and uh, nothing new to report this week.
Okay, great. Thanks, Catherine. Um, I'm gonna go with Catherine Stacey.
Good morning. Um, I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. I just, a couple of things. On Friday, we're having a pretty important meeting of the legislative committee. To go over some of the bills that we already have and some of the fiscal notes we've done. I'll tell you that I've already been with Senator Carson the other day because there's a piece of legislation actually, it came out of judiciary. Without a public hearing last week. It has to do with expectation of privacy. It would really have a real, uh, has a real problem. When we're talking about the registry of deeds and the information we have here. So um, spoke to her about that so that when it goes over to the Senate, um. We're gonna try to, uh, actually we're gonna put it to interim study. So we're working hard and I wouldn't, you know, say to anybody, if you are interested. You need to really start to participate in the lodge committee because we have a lot of bills that affect county government. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Kathy, did you see that Supreme Court case that came out yesterday about ninety-one A?
I, I did. I did.
It's, you know, there are reverberation, there will be reverberations for the county and for um, well. Uh, not just law court, but you know, a lot of departments on.
Exactly. Absolutely. Yeah, because that was pretty interesting with regards to you talking about the department safety one.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I read it yesterday. Yeah, I did read it. Yes. And you're absolutely right. We'll have ramifications, ninety-one A.
Right.
Yeah, it's kind of scary.
Yep, I'm gonna go, Jason Smith.
Good morning, everyone. Um, just a update uh, with um, you know, besides COVID. We are seeing um, more um, as Jude was mentioning with staff, but also our residents as well. Um, four residents have been tested with um, RSV, um, an upper respiratory infection on the same unit. So we're having our res, excuse me, staff mask on that particular unit where we have that small outbreak. We have a staff member that tested positive with COVID and we have uh, one staff member in the nursing home that tested positive with flu. And another one in assisted living. Um, just as a reminder, on November thirtieth, from nine AM to noon. Um, we have the uh, COVID vaccine clinic on Driscoll Ground, if anyone's interested. Um, Glendale, in other news, Glendale uh, Dining Services General Manager is no longer with um, Glendale. So we are in the process of uh, or Glendale's in the process of looking for another general manager. Um, we have uh, Dr. Vaughn who has uh, accepted the medical director uh, for May. Uh, when Dr. Singer um, steps down. And so we're very excited to have Dr. Vaughn. She's been here for many years. And is uh, well-known within the community. So we're very happy to continue our relationship with her. Um, we have a uh, Ellen A. who uh, just recently graduated to be an M and A. And uh, so very excited that she has progressed her career and the county was um, uh, helped support her with uh, that program. So thank you. Um, also, we've just continued with our partnership and community outreach. We entered into a partnership with a library. Uh, our residents now um, can uh, have a library exchange with um, new books. Coming and going. So we're happy about that. So excited. Uh, yesterday, we had a risk management assessment with an outside company and uh, that went well. Uh, so I'll wait for the report to be returned so we can look at a few different things. Um, also, we have our assisted living sniff mock survey. Uh, our window opens up in January. So we're just waiting for survey to arrive. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. And I'm gonna go to Leyla.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, not much to report. I'm thankful for postage meter. Sorry, it's been much. Glad to have that.
We have that in, but that's on its way.
Well, now I need to ask them for the agreement so that we can get it reviewed by Crimex and possibly legal and then, yeah, at least now we're moving forward.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, all right. So we're on to new business. Anybody have any new business they'd like to bring up? There are none. I'm gonna go, any old business? Uh, going to, says walk-in, but I'm supposed to do, I think, public, ask a public comment this time. So is there anyone in the public? I didn't see anybody on Zoom, but I don't know if I have all this, I'm looking at all this square. I don't think so. So is there anyone in the public that wants to speak? Yeah, okay. So now we, uh, thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time. We are, we need to do the walk-in for uh, human resources.
There are two walk-ins. I wonder if it would be better to talk about some of the, it would make sense to table these right now, go into non-publicity. Have a more robust discussion of um, sort of some personnel related issues and then come out and talk about these. Uh, these motions. With that, I'd move to um, I guess move to enter into non-public person, to ninety-one A, point three. Um, and request at this time that uh, Ather folks and Jason Smith, they in?
Right, motions been made from the non-public.
Pat, do, do you, you have a non-public as well? Is it okay if one of us texts you and will you jump to getting being quoted anytime soon? You're still on mute, but you're.
I don't have court this morning, so that's fine. Just shoot me a text and I'll sign back on.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes, I vote yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Uh, so we're out of non-public and um, I'm going to move to seal some minutes. Uh, the first issue regarding we took in uh, non-public was a staffing, staffing and temporary positions. And um, we will not be sealing those. The second issue regarded a personnel matter. And I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely because it could adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board. The third uh, issue was also a personnel matter and I moved to uh, seal those minutes indefinitely. Because it could render a proposed action ineffective. And the fourth issue is, I moved to seal indefinitely. Because it could, it was in relation to union negotiations. And finally, um, and the fifth issue does not.
So I'll second that. Motion been made and seconded. So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gado?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay. And um, in relation to that, we uh, we had previously tabled some uh, walk-in. A regarding a temporary position. And with that, from human resources. And with that, I move to approve the amendment to the thirty on wage schedule for one position effective December third, twenty twenty-three. As recommended by the senior director of human resources and the senior director of long-term care services.
Second, motion been made and seconded. Any one discussion? If not, an emotion, Mr. Gado?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Um, I also moved to approve the temporary non-benefits eligible temp staff, therefore transportation technician position. At an hourly rate, range of eighteen dollars to twenty-four dollars per hour effective November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Not to exceed six months from the date of the employee's hire into the position. Wages and associated employer expenses to be paid. From the long-term care staff salary lines.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, I'm, I'm just a little curious. Why does it say clerical? And then transportation technician. What's clerical about it? Or I?
That's, I think, just the way it is categorized. Because it.
Okay, it's just, it's a driver, but yeah. Okay, I mean, it's semantics, but we'll go.
All right, so, so we'll session?
Yeah, second.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in discussion. Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll be asked. That's it.
And I move further.
Seconded, the origin.
Wait.
We have to vote.
All right, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I didn't think anyone.